Motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's do reports.
Hello, I'm David, I'm Karen, and I will be doing the student report. All strings sports have begun, starting with junior high soccer. Both the boys and the girls have started their season and now we meet tomorrow at home against Montgomery. The varsity baseball season has also begun. They had a current record of one win and three losses. The varsity softball team has a current record of two losses. Student government is planning to pay out the year activities at the rally and lock party. Students who are actively involved in student programs, like the, 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 students in grades seven through ninth can, can spring play there. Six to nine. The cost of 2026 is planning a crawl which will be held at the David A. D. Waters Center at Ableton. On May 10th, that's six games. The seniors are also in the middle of planning their last physical events. They are currently planning a class day which will be the last day of school on June 4th. Graduation will be held on this year. Onto the events happening at the school. Students in grades seventh and eighth will be taking the PSSA English, English Language Arts exams next week and the Math and Science exam. National Honor Society is hosting another blood drive on May 9th. That's all happening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You can come down and sit with us, see all of the, yourself.
What?
You can't hear it so far away.
I said, you're welcome to come down and sit with us so you don't have to sit.
I'm good.
Well, fine. Go to our admin reports, Mr. Fessler.
I don't have any.
Dr. Zoad.
I just wanted to update the board, I think I may have a little bit last week, but with the special education compliance monitoring, things went, went very well when they were finally able to, to make it out to do the monitoring. There's, there's three major components to the special education monitoring. One being the facilitated self-assessment, one being an educational benefit review, and the third being an onsite time where they do observations. They interview teachers and parents and there's, it's agreeable. But through all of that, we had a conference, Doug and I had a conference with Mark Ishman, the, our B R advisor, and he said that everything checked out really well. We'll have like a final thing that they give us to finish things up. But ultimately, the only areas that he wants me to look at a little bit closer are graduation rate and participation in state and local assessments, which with this monitoring, they look back for six years. And in the last, you know, six years, we've had, you know, the pandemic and there were a lot of things that, that impacted both our graduation and our state, participation in state assessments, but it wasn't anything that was, that stood out as like a major huge concern or red flags to him. Everything else checked out really well. So I appreciate everybody's, from our team's time that they put in to help support me through that and our teachers' time. Although the monitoring went a little bit different than, than it typically does. I made sure to include some of the really cool things that we've been doing in a, in the information that I had to give him, including how we included all of our students in the toboggan slide, anyone that wanted to be able to participate. We had some neat pictures of that to showcase, you know, how we were able to do that among a lot of other, you know, new activities.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Severlin?
I just want to remind families that the PSSA testing does begin next week at the elementary school. I believe the E L A is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday morning. And the following week math is Monday, Tuesday. And then science for grade five is Wednesday, Thursday. At the high school, our E L A is Tuesday and Wednesday next week. And then the following week, Monday, is math and Wednesday is science for eighth grade only. Just make sure your kids are getting a good night's sleep and are ready to go on test day. I also want to remind the board and the community that we have the opening ceremony for the new addition on May 10th. The official ribbon cutting will be at eight thirty.
Thank you. Eight thirty, is what you said? Mr. McMahon?
Yeah, just a little speaking for that, a couple of updates on that addition. Very close, they're still waiting on a couple of tears or something right yet. They were shorted or actually wrong, I got the version. So they're waiting on them. Chris Paul is, who's been the main guy there, they're cleaning on it again over the past couple of days. I found a couple of busted ceiling tiles or nothing, four tiles. When I was down there last week, so the tiles, I was up doing some other work, so I had to fix them. The only thing is roofers are coming back, they have to do some capping. Seeing like at the archway entrance sign, there's some of the material roofing that's already come over. They have to get that trimmed up, they have to get the cap removed. There's some work in the backside. Landscapers are done. They got that seeded. These stuff come up here shortly. I want to go to the sign a little bit. Anyway, other data, I gave the locksmith the key scheduled for what we want to do with upper rooms. Need to be eaten light, whatever, so they have that. Actually Mills, they're working for Mills. They want to know what the district wanted to do. So I just had to tell the hunters keys, I matched some of the keys to the already existing key district. So there's not all those extra keys that have to be. That, I think that's.
Did they fix the cracked tile in that section? Did you see the cracked tile in this section? Did they fix?
Yeah, I seen it. I believe if you look at this in the main pantry.
Yeah.
There was, it was about three quarters of the way down, the light, you have to look at a certain way.
It was just on the crack, it was on the corner.
Corner was correct. Because it's like lax, you know, I mean, that's a crack, but that makes it very hard to see. We could see the color change on one side entirely, the other, so it was really what they had fixed. They fixed the one that lands, I guess you can hear the doors down here. In order to, for Chris to make the doors, but there, he had actually lost the tile level. Just for the framework, so they also fixed that. Everything looks, what was, is pretty good shape. Dixon, the heating guys, they're all done with their stuff. So the electric isn't done, they did the fire testing today. So that's been verified, that's all good. So soon we should begin our, I would say.
And if I could jump on that, I'd like to give Mr. Matus a shout out because he made a phone call and we're supposed to have the equipment here for the open house.
Fine.
Awesome.
Chris, do you have an update on the, on the fencing with the netting?
Yeah, that's still, that couldn't be weather driven now. Last they talked, we're going to start maybe Thursday, this Thursday. But I'm not sure that's the case, I hear it's going to be the next week now. The report, I think I had the eighteen, eighteenth, they were kind of shooting for that. It'll be close, it should be somewhere around there, and they have schedules. Ball games would rather be referring with that stuff when it's going on. So we'll be working around that.
They're going to bring their rock drills, right? They're going to bring their rock drills, right?
Some diamond like, like the.
They won't, they won't just be digging holes, so.
They can't claim ignorance after all the time they spend with the foundation over here. They should know what they're up against.
Thank you. Mr. Matus?
I'll just, there was a question last week about fund balances and where we finished at the end of last year. And the audit is on item D for finance for acceptance. We had a, a use of fund balance in twenty-three, twenty-four of a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We had budgeted a use of fund balance of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So a little better than budgeted. A portion of that use of fund balance is actually cleaning up receivables that were still in the books from, when we transitioned from FoxPro to FIS, the invoices. There was just a different process that we needed to use to close those out. And we didn't know that at the time, those invoices had just been sitting there, but we had already been paid for them. So that was just an accounting correction. That leaves our committed fund balance at two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Our assigned fund balance, which would be for things like exceptional specialty costs or cyber tuition costs at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and our unassigned fund balance at one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So all told, in the general fund, combined fund balances were at two million and seventy-three thousand dollars.
So, and then could you go over like the snapshot?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. So I also pulled our financial performance in twenty-three, twenty-four as of March thirty-first and compared that to our financial performance in twenty-four, twenty-five on March thirty-first. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we are at a surplus, you know, revenues over expenditures of about two million dollars. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're at two point four million. So of course, you know, that's, there's some assumptions to compare that particular date and time. The biggest one is, do you have the same number of payrolls? Because that's a, a huge cost, you know, that goes out over two weeks, and we do. So that's, that's a fair comparison. All in all, I think it, it shows that.
More conservative budgeting, I believe.
Yep.
Because we weren't quite sure what, what the state was going to give us, so we were a little more conservative than, or.
Yeah. And so, you know, the, the, that's a, that's a good thing to be running, you know, a better surplus than last year. Of course, you know, if you're to do an apple to staff as comparison, one thing that we haven't done the past two years is make a transfer. We budgeted a transfer to our capital reserve fund, but our cash position in late May, early June, the past two years, hasn't allowed for it. So, so that it, you know, if, if we continue with a similar performance through the end of the year, it would be good for us to be able to make a, a cap reserve transfer at the end of the year. Because that, after the, the prior roofing project and some of the other projects that, you know, have been much needed and well received and, and good improvements on the district, but our, our capital reserve account balance is down to forty thousand dollars. Our capital projects account, which is being used to pay out for the addition, dipped under one million for the first time since our latest round of financing. And that would be drawn down probably within, you know, a hundred thousand dollars by the end of the project. So, so it'd be nice if we could start to, we've been in a building phase, now we need to kind of start building up some of our reserves again. But that, that drawdown to a hundred thousand also includes the cost to do the public school facility improvement grant piece. So where we'll be getting pre-state dollars for every dollar we put out. So next week, you may hear me complain about some decisions the state is doing in terms of budgeting. But the public school facility grant is an area where our, our district is benefiting from that program.
Any question?
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Mr. Lindner?
I don't believe I have anything in addition. Well, you had made comment about the, the literacy council.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you could share that some, some examples.
Yeah, you know, there, there were a lot of things that we discussed in our December board retreat. And all of those items that we discussed, including the literacy, the E L A, some of the programs we're doing there in the elementary school, you know, we've, we've brought all those to fruition. So, yeah, it's kind of exciting. You know, the, the faculties in both buildings are doing book studies, which is nice to see. And that's kind of a, a, a teacher-developed program. And so, you know, when you see some cooperation and coordination amongst the, the faculty for new learning trends, it's, it's nice to see.
And it includes our East Experience faculty and our most experienced.
I'm worried.
I have one.
Oh, yes, Katie, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to congratulate the eighteen members that went to FBLA states beginning of April. And we have Lily McCarty who took first place, Jenna Everlin, and Natalie Lutter who took fourth place, which qualifies them for the national conference, which is in Anaheim, California. So I wanted to congratulate them on a job well done at FBLA.
Thanks, Kate. That's awesome. You forgot your kid was gone?
It, it seems so long ago now. But, yeah, I guess I should say now starts, you know, after testing, the field trip season. So there ought to be a lot of outside activities for our, our kids to participate and enjoy. And all of them are learning experiences. There are a couple of club trips that are kind of end of year, but the elementary field trips are all educational trips. So that, that's always nice to see. And you may have seen that post, Chris and I participated with, with Mrs. Wetlawfer and Bryce and Amy Burgett, their classes, their science classes. You know. Yeah, just sort of, you know, they, yeah, they actually got to see, you know, how it affects, how it affects us.
You know, some of the biomass.
Yeah, using local resources, you know. When you talk about green energy, it's not always windmills and solar farms. It's also using the biomass that we have readily available around us. It's a renewable resource from, from the Dwight Lewis forest that they have, that they manage. And we're using a waste product to heat the facility, which is just outstanding. So, you know, you're not, you're not tanking and, and piping and shipping fuel oil from foreign countries. Where actually it's coming from Hills Grove, so. Yeah, so it's, that's, that is really an excellent product of, oh, there was a lot of research that went into it when we put the biomass in.
Different topic there, you'd normally see students at law, but I think it was a really cool thing. If I take them out of the room, what they would be doing normally in science or whatever, it could have been something else. They actually had a significant school, this is why I was talking, and it needed H track. So they had to, they did all that, so they want to do all that stuff. And so they have a better understanding. Now, but that's all also made you got future people someday, you know, kids ready, get into that, this is whatever. But it was really, it was really cool.
That all went along with the Amplify Science curriculum that we.
That's really awesome, how you guys integrate that stuff.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's one of those, you can really prove that you can't outsource or, or offshore those types of jobs. And we have that available right here in West County.
Okay. Don't see any public, do we have anything online?
No.
Um. Yeah, we did. We did. So now? Yeah, so we had an executive session last month for personnel. We will have another one tonight after the meeting concludes to discuss the superintendent search process. I'll share more updates there when we get to the board reports, but we'll do that this evening as well. All right, onto finance.
Finance. A, finance committee recommends acceptance of the following reports. Number one, the treasury, treasurer's report, number nine. Two, the capital reserve fund. Three, the capital projects fund. Four, cafeteria fund. Five, the high school athletic fund. Six, the high school activity fund. Seven, the elementary school activity fund. I so move.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
B, the finance committee recommends approval of the following check registers and the March budget summary. I'd like to call attention to one register in particular. The April fourteenth register is two hundred thousand, six, two hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eleven cents. And this is for two months of cyber school. Charter cyber schooling. And what is it? It's roughly one point three million dollars per year.
We're on, we're on track for about one point three two million in spend on outside cyber. With approximately fifty.
Like I said, I just want to kind of call attention to that.
Yeah, keep doing it. Thank you.
The total will be two million, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. I so move.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
C, the finance committee recommends approval of the following payment requests from M H, M H E Engineering. Number one, M H E Engineering Services, three thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. Two, Mills Payment, number seventeen, fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. An I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
D, administration recommends acceptance of the single audit from Baker Tilly for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and I so move.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
E, administration recommends approval of the Food Services Management Company contract with the Nutrition Group Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. This contract will be renewable for four additional years. I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Six yeses, zero noes. Motion carries.
F, the administration recommends approval of an amendment to extend agreement with the S S Northeast LLC for substitute acquisition services through June twentieth, twenty twenty-seven. I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Six yeses, zero noes. Motion carries.
B, the finance committee recommends acceptance of the following donations. One, donation of fifteen hundred dollars from the Solomon County Rural Electric Department Incorporated to the high school science department. Two, donation of a Schwinn, Erde, Nerdine, wife from, um, I think, Hillary.
Thank you, I'm telling them.
Okay, that's better. Valued at four hundred dollars. Three, donation of five hundred dollars from the Dushor Music Club to the high school music program, trip to New York City to see The Lion King. Four, donation of five hundred dollars from the Solomon County Council of Arts to the high school music program trip to New York City to see The Lion King. Donation, five, donation of a thousand dollars from the Quads to the high school music program for their trip to New York City to see The Lion King. Six, donation of a thousand dollars from the Solomon County Recreation Association to go play outside, club, kayaking trip. Seven, donation of lumber from Lewis Lumber valued at approximately a thousand dollars to the high school technology education program. Eight, donation of track starting blocks from Rebecca Enel valued at approximately a hundred and fifty dollars to the athletic department. I'd like to thank everybody for all their donations. It's very kind of everybody. And I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Just thank you, this list gets longer each time and fantastic to see everyone rally to get these, get these opportunities. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, athletics and health.
N M A, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of Glenn Vaughn as the varsity boys' basketball head coach and Riley King as the varsity boys' basketball assistant coach for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. And I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And B, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of Rich Schweiger and Austin Kelsey as the junior high boys' basketball coaches for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
C, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of Brandy Gilgetzky as varsity basketball cheerleading coach for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And D, the athletic and health committee recommends approval to advertise for the vacant varsity girls' basketball head coach and varsity girls' basketball assistant coach positions for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, buildings and grounds.
I think we can skip the informational, we went over that last week. B, the buildings and grounds committee recommends approval of the use of school facilities request from the Eagles Mirror Report and Munson Valley Fire Department to host public meetings on the future of EMS services in the high school auditorium from six thirty P M to eight thirty P M on June eleventh and June, July ninth, twenty twenty-five. I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
C, administration recommends approval of the use of school facilities request from the Solomon County Boys Basketball Club, practice in the high school gym or elementary school gym on Mondays to Fridays from May first, twenty twenty-five to August ninth, twenty twenty-five, from five P M to nine P M. And I so move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Curriculum and Student Activities, item A. The Curriculum and Student Activities Committee recommends approval to post and advertise for the anticipated Sullivan County Elementary School, Sullivan County High School, and extended school year summer school positions, and ISO move. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel. Amanda, do you want to read, or do you want one of us to take it?
I can go ahead as long as you guys can hear me.
Yeah, you sound great. You have the red letter version, right?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. Go for it.
Okay. Hey, the Personnel Committee recommends approval to add Kathleen Phillips and Kingdom Moll to the list of approved substitute custodians, and ISO move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
B, the Personnel Committee recommends approval of an unpaid day of leave for employee number 100717, and ISO move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion carries.
C, the Personnel Committee recommends acceptance with regret a letter of retirement from Chris McMahon. It's the maintenance director with the effective date of June 20th, 2025, and ISO move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to thank Mr. McMahon. When I became the principal here a few years ago, he was very supportive. And when I asked him to do things, he'd kind of look at me funny and then be like, okay. Also, as a teacher, if I needed something, Mr. McMahon would help me out any way they could. He will be best.
I'd like to echo what Lynn said. Chris and I have worked together on our admin team for, this is our 11th school year now. And he's always been a great support to me. We've had a lot of laughs over, over the time. But he's also just like a kind person that like, I don't know how many times I've been like, hey, Chris, the city of my house is broken. Like, what do you think I need to do to like fix it? You know, give me like, you know, step-by-step instructions. I think I even called him for my basement bugs. And he's like, you gotta tap it. And so I'm like, yay. And so he, just a super helpful guy. And in the special education department, sometimes we pass him like unique requests, you know, for him with lighting and different things like that. And he's always, you know, been super helpful. And he's given ideas to, like, if I had an idea about like how I think something might work, he, you know, we work together on projects to make sure that we get it done and help everyone.
I'd like to thank Mr. McMahon for his dedication over the years. It takes a lot to keep this facility going, to keep it heated in the winter. You know, I've seen, well, you spoke of it so lovingly when it was regards to that program you're talking to children about. But, you know, I helped set up the text alerting system for the, you know, for the biomass. So I know, you know, my phone has received every alert, but I haven't had to come on site to get the fire going again. So it takes a lot of, a lot of effort and a lot of dedication to keep this place ready for our children to come in and be educated. So I really appreciate that. And, you know, for your kindness and your left behind coffee cups.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm going to remark on a few things that, you know, people don't see. Being able to use the facilities because the sewer plant is functioning, taking care of the plumbing aspects of that, even in the kitchen with grease traps and refrigerators and I have to hear contactors one more time. But then working with Laporte, the Laporte Water Company, you know, we've had a number of breaks over the years with, you know, the existing plumbing, the exchange of pumps, you know, we can't operate with water or without water. The other things are, we've really cleaned up the facility. You don't see wax buildup on the edges of hallways. You see nice shiny hallways, bright lights, big projects like LED lighting in the gymnasium, keeping that painted. A floor program, working on the grounds program to make sure our fields are rolled and aerated and seeded and fertilized. You know, we're getting those back into shape. There's accessibility programs that we didn't have before Chris was here. The ramp, and I don't know if you've seen sidewalks that we've had milled so there aren't drips on our sidewalk seams.
The elementary school.
Yeah, the elementary school entrance. I told Chris, I don't know what you got to do, but I want to make it look like the courthouse. So we had that entrance made there. That's the first.
That seems like a small thing, but that's really made a huge difference.
Yeah, yeah, even public accessibility and input on the way the sidewalks go into the new sports addition, how we won't have any bumps or curbs or ramps or, you know, accessibility has just been changed. And some new programs like LED light panels and the hallways that he started, electrical improvements. There's all these little things that you don't see, but they take time outside of the normal maintenance schedule. And sometimes they're hard to get done and hard to schedule. Blacktop resurfacing and painting and patching of the roadways. You know, we couldn't, we couldn't do it without it. So I really appreciate his effort and his work in getting that. Oh, yeah, and the security door program that we had here for a number of years. We didn't have a contractor act as a GM to do that. Chris took that. We took the money. We were able to purchase all product then instead of management or administration. So every door in the elementary is a new type of security door with new locks. Most of the doors in the, in the high school will continue until all of them are completed. So that was one big thing. Other, you know, other safety things like the jersey barriers around the elementary playground, a lot of drainage projects we had, removal of dead and dying trees around, so we don't have those on our facility. So there are all those things in the background that you normally don't think of, you know, other than, you know, you see him walking around with a toolbox, you know, that goes beyond just day to day. So I truly appreciate his, his effort.
And I wasn't part of the motivation to do this one for the past three years. I wasn't.
Which is why I became grumpier.
If I could add just one more thing. Chris is a fellow alumnus from Sullivan County, and he is a gurken through and through. If he had his choice, every single thing in this building would be red. So seeing the red, the red roof on the new addition will remind me of Chris all the time.
Thank you, Chris, for your service. Great to be here.
Okay, are we ready?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one more thing. I just, I've worked in education, you know, my whole career. And I think like, there's many jobs within a school that, you know, you're not directly teaching children, but without them, you couldn't teach children. And sometimes folks show up for that job, and they do a good job, but they're not like invested in the end product. And I just, that's never been a question for you. Thank you for the way you showed up every day for our kids and for our district from a parent and a work member. All right, we can, we can vote. I think we've had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Doug said he'd stay.
Okay. The administration recommends approval to advertise for open positions, and ISO move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to policy and procedure. Anthony, do you want to read?
Sure can.
All right.
So 13, I may, Policy and Procedure Committee recommends the acceptance of the following policy, Policy 121, Field Trip, and ISO move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That is all, all in chief.
Thank you. Transportation. Okay. Transportation. A, administration recommends approval to advertise for the summer school transportation, and ISO move. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll vote here. I'll try to wait till I forgot. Gabe and Amanda brought this up. They were signing, the school was signing. Not signing on his way.
Oh, yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board reports. Anthony?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Amanda?
No, I have nothing to add.
Go.
I'd just like to, again, thank Chris for his years of service to the district. We'll be missed just a little bit.
It won't be coffee. I mean, we used to, where's Chris? I don't know. Follow the
It was, it was a safety hazard.
It was.
And also, again, through everybody's donations, I was saying, I was very kind to them.
Yeah, we've had a tremendous number of donations this year.
And our clubs are out working with these organizations and helping them with some of our best. And that's how connecting with and being appreciative of today.
Heather?
Congratulations to the FBLA team. Chris, I'm really mad that you're leaving. The only reason I said, I agreed to the retirement is because he made me. And then, you know, a wrestling season just wrapped up, so good job to those guys as well.
Great. I can speak to superintendent search process a little bit, just to provide updates there. Board has contracted with the IU. I talked to Christina Steinbacher Reed there today about the next steps we need to take to actually open the position and get everything advertised. So we're going to discuss that here in the executive afterwards. But everybody should see that opening soon and the advertising for that soon. We are still working hard to try to get somebody in for July 1st.
Congratulations to the FBLA. She left, and thanks for the Susan report out. Really appreciate it. Chris, congratulations. Wish you all the best. We'll see you around, whether it's in Duane or Dusho or wherever you happen to be.
Can we get him a mic for his stand-up routine?
And the donation list is just incredible. Like, thank all the people who donated. Greatly appreciate it. Also want to, you know, for the, this year for the girls varsity basketball coaches, assistant varsity, I just want to give a shout out to Jason and Ellen. Thank you very much for stepping in and taking the big turn. Thank you.
Do we have any public input?
Yeah, for Chris, there is Ding Dong, which is.
All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're adjourned. Thank you.